We will immediately start the Facilities and Operations Committee. Ms. Fekish, I guess we're okay to stay on the same feed?
Yes, we are okay. You may continue.
Okay. Give me a 15-second break while I switch agendas.
While you're doing that, I just want to point out, I do have a North Monaco Technical Career Center Joint Operating Committee this evening. I think some of the board members do also. So I will be jumping off of this one to jump into that one.
Thank you for your time, Dr. Tetrick. Appreciate that as well. Okay. Oh, and when's the next meeting, Mr. Dur? I switched agendas already. Safe Schools. When's that October meeting?
He did. It looks like he jumped off, so let me pull it up. Yeah, give me a second here.
I believe it was October 26th?
I have. October 26th. That so typically, we would say Safe Schools at 6:00 and Facilities and Operations at 6:30. Mr. Casa, maybe you want to discuss with this committee if you want to swap them because you were saying you thought Safe Schools would go a bit longer. So we can discuss that, but it'll be the 26th.
We'll bring that up in other business. Thank you for that recommendation. Okay, so the next Safe Schools is October 26th, tentatively at 6:00 PM, virtually here on Zoom. This will be a call to order now for the Facilities and Operations Committee meeting for the September 2020. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to be clear, I do cover my heart as well when we do the pledge. It was great to see that flag. I missed when we would all do the pledge together in Unison. All right, with that, we have an opportunity for public comments. If you have a comment to make or would wish to address the board, please raise your hand.
Just waiting for catch-up here. I do not see any hands at this time.
Okay.
No hands for public comment.
All right, we have public comment towards the end of the meeting, so we can always I can always regale everyone with my public comment statement at that point. All right, minutes from this August 31st, 2020 Facilities and Operations Committee meeting, do we have a motion to approve?
They're moved.
Do we have a second? May we have a second or a mute button?
Second.
All right.
I'm double muted. I apologize.
Hey, very safe, Ms. Ramich. Any questions or comments about the minutes? All right, seeing none, minutes are approved. Let's move on to items recommended for work session or action meeting. Mr. Schneider?
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Good evening. This evening, we have a couple change orders for the committee to review. The first of which is a number of change orders for the Crawford Stadium project. There's a change order for change order number one for the electrical contractor. And Mr. Slaughter, do you want to give a little background to this change order and the amount of $30,146.83?
Certainly. This change order was due to discrepancy in scale on the drawings that were supplied to the architect. This resulted in inaccurate survey dimension for the communications work. The scared scaled differential was almost double, and it resulted in an increase in the fiber length from the the MDF and the TV studio to the stadium. Had this been correct on the bidding documents, it would have been cost would have been included in the initial bid and would have been higher. The costs were reviewed and negotiated with the contractor BSI. The change order request is in the amount of $30,146.83.
The second
Mr. Schneider, question on this one. So the bid document, who provides the bid document? I guess what I'm asking, was the root cause done to determine why the the information, the scale differential was incorrect on the documents provided to the bidders? So that this wouldn't happen again?
The documents are typically provided to the professionals from the school district, from old sets of documents. So there's a number of different projects and buildings additions at the high school. I am I'm not 100% certain which documents were transferred over to the architect, but the the document that went over did not have was not scaled properly.
I get that. It's just the root cause to say, hey, you know, when the when there's another project and bid documents go to the bidders, making sure that that doesn't happen again. And so I'm sure you'll take care of that. The the next question about it is for the electrical contractors, and I don't remember the bids, and maybe this is something that you can just talk later about. So if you add $30,000 to the electrical contractor or any of the other contractors' total cost close to this, so that the lowest bid won, so if you add $30,000 to the lowest bid, were there any other contractors that actually then would have been lower?
I would have to look at that. I did not look at that specifically, Ms. Wesley, but um what I did provide was an analysis of the change orders and the percentage of increase of each individual contract. That's something I did not look at.
I did look at that. It's just that, you know, again, it's 30,000 is 30,000, and I mean, I get it. You know, old drawings and they're incorrect. And again, it's it's not about that piece of it so much as not doing it in the future. And my concern that potentially had this been included, there might have been another contractor that actually, the electrical contractor, might have been lower overall. We don't know that. I don't remember the numbers. I'm sorry. And I did look them up and write up the question.
Sure. The the second change order to review is for the plumbing contract. It's 001. It's for the addition of shock arrestors or what they're called water hammer restors in the men's toilet rooms. The documents indicated the proper water hammer restors for the women's room, but the drawing said not show any in the the men's room. So this is an omission on the construction, the documents, and the change orders in the amount of $1,443.92. Mr. Slaughter, any additional information on that?
No, other than we are working on negotiating with the design professionals to try and have them absorb some or all that cost.
The next is number two for the plumbing contractor, and it's for plumbing to a roof drain at the entrance canopy of the amenities building. The storm piping was not included in the documents, and this again is another omission on the documents. And the change order amount is $6,274.85. And Mr. Slaughter got anything additional on that?
Yes, this one we've already discussed with the design professionals, and we're asking them to reimburse the district for the entire amount.
And then the the final is the general contractors' change order number one and the amount of $1,892.98. During the township's review of all the sanitary system submittals, the township sewer authority required us to paint the inside of the manholes with epoxy paint. This requirement was not known prior to the bidding process. It's not part of the design specifications. So this was done by Grace Industries on a time and material basis, and it's in the amount of $1,892.98. So we're
Mr. Schneider, during the next thing, would you, I guess you'll come back with whether or not you the success of discussion with the contractor to absorb the cost for the second and third one, the 1,400 and that 20, 6,200?
Yes. Yes, we've we've had numerous discussions about some things with the Architerra, sublet the architectural design to another firm, and that's so we're talking with Architerra and that other firm. So we at the next meeting, we should have information on that.
Thanks.
Ms. Wesley, if I could, I was able to look up the electrical contract information while Mr. Schneider was covering the other change orders. And we did we did award an alternate on that particular contract. So to answer your question, the delta between the low bid and the second lowest bid was $46,000.
So so 30,000 of it. All right, so if there are additional, so where I'm going, and you know where I'm going. If there are additional change orders resulting from issues with documents provided during the bidding process that obviously fall in the district, my recommendation is that we figure out, or you all, the administration, figure out how to, you know, avoid that, because then if there's a few more and we approach 46,000, and potentially the lowest bidder is not the lowest bidder anymore who got the contract.
Ms. Wesley, the most likely, the other contractors will be doing this also. So this was an omission in the document, so it could possibly be if they were, we had the second low bidder, they would also be requesting the change order also.
True, true. Yeah, it's it's true, but but at the end of the day, my my point is is that, you know, things like this always used to get me. And so I just want to make sure that the dollars for the district are are being spent prudently and, you know, with the documentation's accurate. But I understand too, old drawings cause havoc.
And Mr. Linsky, could you pull up the report, the financial report? So each each time we bring forward change order requests to the Facilities and Operations Committee, we'll be providing this report. This report outlines the different change orders and different responsibilities that the change orders are reflected to. For example, if the board were to request a change, it will be under under requested unforeseen conditions. We have regulation and utility changes similar to the painting of the sanitary manholes, a project improvement. Architect initiated, so basically that omission of the not the emission, but the drawings, they're recommending that this was be a missionated change order and then have the architect engineer omission. So this will be tabulated each time that we bring forward change orders. And you can see that the total change orders for this round brings the total percentage of change orders to the overall contract contractors amount at 0.49%. So this report won't be forthcoming with all requests of the change orders for all projects.
Mr. Scrocky, thank you for pulling that date. I'm sorry. I did thank you timely, but thanks.
No worries. Also, just to add on this particular document that's on the screen now, the project budget for the Crawford Stadium project was a 5% contingency or $349,000. So obviously, the project isn't completed yet, but we're well, well, well below that 5% contingency that was in the budget.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Scrocky, for reading my mind.
Mr. Casa, if we could have a motion on this?
Okay, do we have a motion to advance the Crawford Stadium change orders to action meeting?
They're moved. Second.
All right, motion passes. We'll move forward to action. Any comments or questions? Good, because I got that out of order. I should have asked that first. Okay, thank you. Next item, Mr. Schneider?
Yes, the next item, some some change order for the NAP Elementary School project. It is change order number one to the general contractor in the amount of $14,405.63. The Montgomery County Conservation District did not have their final review completed prior to the bidding awards. And as a result, they added some erosion and sedimentation controls to the final record drawings, which we had to reflect onto the project and through the contractor. Mr. Slaughter, want to explain the negotiations that you went through on this?
Certainly. There were several discrepancies in the original change order request when sent in by the contractor. We had to review and do a detailed takeoff for each item. And after some back and forth, we were able to reduce their initial change order request from $21,430.21 down to $14,405.63. And this was again based on the authority having jurisdiction over the site and earthwork, and this was post-award. So these changes had to be implemented in order for us to get the final land development approval.
Any comments or questions?
Mr. Linsky, can you bring up that financial report, please? And again, this is a financial report for the NAP project, and at this point, we are at 0.06% change orders on the overall construction project.
Mr. Schneider, do you have a status on the soil that was remediated and had to be sent to a landfill, that that particular change order?
That change order, we have not gotten the final amounts. We just got the the draft report of that material. The material was sold to a landfill in Morrisville that would remediate that soil, so we don't have the final number on that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional change orders for that?
That's it, Mr. Casa.
So we have a motion to approve and send this to action meeting?
They're moved. Second.
All right, any questions, comments? Seeing none, motion passes. And last one, please, Mr. Schneider?
Yes, the last item is information regarding bulk salt purchasing. In the past, the district would put a bid out for bulk salt. We typically use in the order of anywhere between 300 to 400 tons a year. Last year was a very light year, obviously, a very warm year. But we utilized this year, we joined a consortium with the upper Dublin municipalities. And upper Dublin runs a joint consortium with majority of the municipalities in North Penn School District and other municipalities around Montgomery County, and secured a very competitive pricing for the bulk salt. The purchasing group purchases about 60,000 tons of salt a year, so that buying power provides us for a very good pricing. We received prices for next year of $51.05 per ton. And last year, we paid $57.87 per ton. So this, these documents will be forthcoming from the Morton Salt Company, and we will have a contract directly with Morton Salt, but it was administered through the upper Dublin Township. So very favorable pricing for us for bulk salt for this winter, and hopefully, we don't need any of it. So that's what I'm hoping for.
Yeah. Very interesting, because I was having a conversation with Representative Malagari from PA House about these types of consortiums. So it is timely that you brought that up. I apologize to digress, but I'm very interested in learning what else we would purchase through that type of consortium.
We purchased quite a bit of items through PA Co-Stars and things like that and other types of the district belongs to many consortiums to improve their buying power. This one is more of a local Montgomery County, which is very favorable for us. It's working out very well, so.
Yeah, great news. Any other questions or comments?
I have more of a logistics question. Where is this stored? Do we have a facility where this is kept?
Yeah, we have two facilities. One is at the high school in the back of the high school near the football stadium. You'll see that big structure with a tent over top of it. That's a salt bin. And then we also store salt here at the SSC. We can hold about 250 tons in storage. Right now, we have about 200 tons. So we're well ahead of the game for this winter. Funny to start the winter out.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to send this to action committee? Or action meeting?
They're moved. Second.
Right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Informational items?
Yes, we have our monthly report for the NAP and Crawford Stadium project. Mr. Slaughter?
Sorry, Alt-A did not work to unmute my mic. Well, thank you, everyone. I just wanted to note that as I was doing this, there were a couple items that were scheduled for last month to be completed by this meeting, not realizing that this meeting was moved up a little bit. So there there are a few items that you'll see that were on last month that are also on this month as well. So as we discussed earlier, the at NAP Elementary School, the contaminated soils were removed. The front addition, so the classroom addition, footings and piers are at 90%. Underground piping in the new office area is underway. With the acceleration due to school not starting, we've accelerated phases 1B and 2 with the approval of both the principal and the administration. So we're hoping to get those turned over earlier. We started our ACM abatement already, and that's just about complete. Stormwater piping from the basins to the streets have all been installed, so that's at 90%. Right now, we're installing the concrete block foundations at the windows and at the at the new addition. Anchor bolts, anchor bolts have all installed and leveling plates been installed, so we're ready for steel as soon as it arrives. Lansdale Borough indicated to us that we will not, they will not replace the stormwater piping through the property. So we're proceeding on curbing and paving the bus loop. Right now, we're spreading stone, but we anticipate starting curbs by the second week of August and paving, or I'm sorry, October, and paving the third week in October, so that we can get as much paved as possible, so we get rid of the dirt issue. Land development has also been completed. At the Crawford Stadium, all the sanitary manholes have been installed. We have footing and foundations at both buildings, the amenities building and the athletic building. Underground piping and electric is being installed. The track perimeter drain is at 80%. And all the electrical exterior wall roughens are ongoing, as well as the field netting embeds are being finished as we speak. Next slide, please, Mr. Linsky. So activities planned for the next period at NAP Elementary School, we still have a few submittals that are in the process of being reviewed and approved. The flashing zone sign, we just got an email today from PennDOT. They're going to try and wrap that up by the end of this week with the installation on the second week of October. So our goal to get that in by the start of school looks good. Lansdale Borough indicated to us that they would like to start an inspection procedure. So we're working on that with the borough to define everything they want to look at each time we finish a phase of construction, and we want the want to bring the children into that area. We're also working on updating the documents for the fire escape plans for each phase of construction so that we can turn them over to the building. They can be posted in all the classrooms. And we're working on long lead items for the accelerated phasing because that's a critical issue to get these done on time. So activities planned for the next period, other than planning and design, we want to complete all the foundations at the classroom addition, complete the abatement, foundations and piers at the rear addition, and there's a mechanical enclosure that's back behind the parent drop-off, so we hope to get that underway. Bearing plates for the steel at the rear, a wall framing at the new office, so you'll start to see metal studs and roughen work for all that. I hope, we're hoping to have the steel installation started at the front of the building at the classroom addition. Interior masonry walls, pouring of the slabs, once the underground roughing is completed for the MEP trades. We're reworking the IDF location right now in conjunction with the North Penn IT Department. And HVA main piping and and branch tie-ins, so we could turn the heat on in about two or three weeks. The playground safety surface will be installed, so that when school's back, we will have the two existing structures and the one new structure ready to use. And as we talked about, the bus area stone and curbing. And we're looking to accelerate the water service to the building and have that done before school starts again. And base paving for the third week in October. Next slide, please. So the activities planned at the Crawford Stadium, again, submittal reviews and approvals, this will should be the last time you see that. There's only one or two outstanding items. Continue with our subcontractor township requirements. Townments and township does have an individual contractor permit rec requirement, which does not occur at Lansdale. So we have to make sure every subcontractor that's working on the site is registered with the township. And we finalize the last item for building permits, so we should be receiving them as well as land development. The items that will be planned at construction at Crawford Stadium are the field draining system, the perimeter drain completion, bring the field up to final grade, the masonry walls at both the athletic and the amenities building, the completion of all the underground utilities to the buildings and inside of the buildings. We're looking to pour slabs at the end of this month and start on the exterior and interior walls. Communications duct bank installations will be started by then, as well as the electrical duct bank being completed from the building out to the site. The sanitary line is just about complete now with a couple tie-ins to be finished up. And the water line just started today. They're dropping the water meter pit in, and that'll be completed as well. And any embedded items that we have that we haven't done so far, such as the pole vault box, the triple jump ramps, various sleeves, those kind of things will be installed as we continue, as well as the concrete running paths for the pole vault and the triple jump. And then we are finalizing those stockpiles, the large areas of dirt that you see, and there'll be their final stabilization will take place. Next slide, please. Schedule status updates. We only lost two workdays to weather in September. That's a lot less than we had in August, which is great news. Some of the things that are light late that are non-critical path are the admin office lab is 15 days late, and the kitchen addition foundations are five days late. Steel erection, that's a critical path item. In the admin area, there's only a couple pieces of steel, but that is 10 days late, and that's due to us not receiving the steel yet. Some of the items we were accelerated on is the piers. We got an early start on that. The storm piping finished early. The mechanical underground for the sewer and stormwater finished two days early. And of course, with us accelerating phase 1B and 2, we got a start of at least 60 days on that. Crawford Stadium, some of the late items, we were late one day on the schedule for the sanitary sewer. The bleacher footings are 10 days late and currently not started. We're hoping to get that started in about another week. The plumbing rough was two days late to the finish. Could you scroll down, please, Mr. Linsky? Communication inside is a 30-day late start, and that's due to the change order that you voted to send to the board for approval. Some accelerated items are the turf anchor. We started that 60 days early. Foundation walls were an eight-day early start, and the foundation insulation was five days early. Next slide, please. Newly identified critical issues, a lot of that we went over in the change orders, so some of this is repetitive. I won't repeat it. But we had some unsuitable soil removal at the new bus roadway. That's a unit cost built into the bid with an allowance. There's the underground gas line in the incorrect position. We are still working on negotiating that with the contractor. We had an existing storm inlet that had the was the bottom was completely gone in that, so we had to replace that. And that was replaced as an allowance cost as well. We also had to add an additional storm inlet down on Valley Brook Road to avoid the gas line again, so we've now hit the gas line three times. Didn't damage it, just exposed it, and we're working around that each location. So again, we had to build in allowance for that. And we discussed the soil changes. Crawford Stadium, we still have some unidentified concrete curbing that was underneath the track that we need to remove from site. The reason why we didn't know the cost of that so far was the fact that we weren't sure if we were going to be able to hide it on site somewhere or remove it, we made the determination that it was best to be removed. Transite sanitary piping removal is currently underway. And that is actually removed, we're just waiting to do some of the dirt. And that was based on the fact that we were not advised that the pipe was transites until we excavated and opened it up. There are unsuitable soils at various places around the track and field, we've only replaced some of the smaller areas where the track drain goes. But once we're ready to start the track, we'll have to proof roll and determine if there's any more soils that need to come out. We already talked about the discrepancies in this, in the scale on the drawings, the water hammers and the roof drain and the manhole painting, so those were already covered in the change order. Next slide, please. Safety warning issues, again at NAP, one for mask protection, one for hard hat, and then we actually had a scaffolding violation based upon how the base plate was installed. And we were advised of that by our OSIP inspector, and that was corrected the same day. Crawford Stadium, two warnings for mask, one warning for hard hat, and one warning for safety barrier not in place correctly, and that was again addressed the same day as well. No accidents to report so far on site. And a next slide. We're showing some pictures here at Crawford Stadium, this is the, the rest of the channel drain being installed and the amenities building foundation walls being brought up to grade. Next slide, please. This is the below field drainage being installed, right now we have half the stadium with the secondary under drains installed. And the stone is up to grade, so we're working on completing the other half of that. The athletics building, which we started second after the amenities building, is up to foundations, and that has just started the underground piping in there as of today. Next slide, please. So on your left is the concession and men's bathroom part of the amenities building, and that shows the underground sanitary draining. Similar to what we're installing right now in the athletics building. On the right is the end zone play clock, so there'll be play clocks at each end zone for the players on the field, so we, we set that and put the foundation and post in for that. Next slide, please. A little panoramic view going. Well, I guess it should go in south and north at the status of the stadium right now from the bleachers. Next slide, please. Okay, over at NAP, this is the classroom addition in the front, you can see we have the, the footers and the piers in, and the anchor bolts and the base plates. On the right is, is the drop off that we removed. And that is the old part that is torn up and being hauled off, new stone being brought in. Next slide, please. These are the new windows being installed at NAP at the main office, so they will be floor-to-ceiling windows, basically. We got our delivery of door frames. And you can see the remaining pieces of the foundation that were poured a couple of weeks ago, those now, now have block on them, and the piers are poured, right now you're just looking at the rebar. Next slide, please. The Mason has came to site and set up, and we have several large block deliveries. So he is moving along very well. And this is some of the underground piping inside at the new nurses' location. So that'll all be covered by the concrete flooring as we move forward. And the last slide. That's the berm down at the bottom by Valley Brook Road, we have two berms at NAP and a rain garden. So this is the second berm, the first one is temporary, and that has to be remodified at the end into its permanent position. And then we're just showing you an example of two piers that we, we were pouring, one we had ready to pour and the second that we were pouring. And that's us moving topsoil around. And then this is the said scaffolding that the violation was on after we corrected the problems. And that is the old courtyard, for those of you that are familiar with it, that will become part of the new office. And that's all I have for my presentation tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Slaughter. Excellent, really appreciate all the details and cataloging those pictures for us and sharing it with the public and the board with the committee. Any questions from the committee members?
Mr. Costa, two questions for Mr. Slaughter, if I could. One is for Crawford, the transit sanitary pipe, that'll be a change order as well, I guess, Mr. Schneider, I should ask you.
Yes, last month we reviewed this, we had pricing of three contractors to provide daily rates and also cost for a dumpster and also per ton cost for soil removal. So once that's all accumulated, we will have that ready for you.
Okay, do you think next month?
I believe.
Yes, yes. The pipe's all out of the ground, right now we have about, we have three days worth of work. The two items that are left to do are to sift one of the stockpiles. And the other is to haul off some dirt, we know the exact quantity of dirt, so I would imagine two more days and we'd be done with it. I just need to schedule that with the contractor, because right now they're doing the water line. So as soon as they're done the water line, we're going to move over and get that wrapped up.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Slaughter, regarding the steel delivery, and now it is critical path. And it says the next period you should be starting the steel, so is next period from now to the next meeting, or?
Yes, we anticipate, we're anticipating, we're talking to the steel contractor probably every two days, or at least twice a week. We're expecting a steel delivery in the next two weeks. It'll probably be the interior steel first, and then the addition, the rear addition and the front addition steel as well. So we'll progress from inside the building to the classroom addition, from the classroom addition to the rear addition.
So if it's two weeks, so then that would make it basically like 24 days late. Are any, is any other work on that NAP schedule going to be, end up being critical path as well?
Once the steel's installed, the only other critical path is the roof would be impacted by that based on the schedule. But we're going to continue with our interior framing and roughens, which won't be impacted by that, so we're lucky in that, in that instance.
Sorry, what about the, now, when the kids go back to school, does any of this work, was any of this work part of the accelerated portion?
No, this was, this was all, this was all base work. The work in the, in the accelerated portions was very minor. And we discussed it with the building principal and administration to make sure that they were okay to do without it. Three of the classrooms that we got early, we're going to turn over by the time the kids get back. And then the other portion of phase two that we got, we're going to turn back over in January, so Principal Mueller was able to be able to work without those three classrooms.
All right, thanks. So back to the steel, what's your plan B if you don't get your steel in two weeks?
Well, there is, there is no plan B, he's going to have to get it here, get it up. We're going to work on accelerating how many hours a day they're working, how many days a week they're working to get back on track. You know, he knows that we're, we're pestering him right now to get this in, I think this was a accumulation of when the project was let and getting the submittals together, and there were some conflicts that arose based on the drawings that we had to get worked out before we could actually fabricate the steel.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or insights from the committee? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Slaughter, Mr. Schneider, for this information. We'll move on now to Facilities and Operations reopening activities, please, Mr. Schneider.
Yes, Mr. Costa, thank you. Just a monthly update of the reopening activities. Scrolling up, we are now, since the classrooms are being used in a virtual instructions by teachers, they're being cleaned and sanitized weekly because the one teacher is in the classroom by themselves, and they put their trash out in the hallway. And we go in, we hit the doorknobs in the high-touch outside areas, and we make sure we don't enter the rooms, and we sanitize those rooms weekly. Toilet rooms are cleaned and sanitized daily. All offices are cleaned and sanitized daily. And all the rooms that are being utilized by special ed are being cleaned and sanitized daily also. All the plastic barriers, plexiglass barriers have been fabricated and installed as requested by the principals, and since the nurses came back, we had additional requests. We still have ample supply in stock in case as people return, they have some future requests, so we're in very good shape with the plexiglass barriers. And also 20 of the portable tri-fold dividers that we, we had presented that to the principals, the staff and principals. I would say back in June or July. They requested to have a handful of those in each building so that they could utilize them for any type of one-on-one instruction and things like that, so we received 20 per building, and they are now delivered to the buildings. They'll be used possibly by speech or something like that. Next slide, please. So we're doing very well with receiving supplies. As mentioned, we received the 20 per building student dividers, the social distancing floor tape is available. Five backpack electrostatic disinfectant sprayers are received. We had 200 cases of 10.1 ounce pump hand sanitizers and 46 cases of alcohol wipes received. Next slide, Mr. Linsky. Waiting for delivery, we're still waiting for the 1900 boxes and nitro gloves. They were ordered through the MCIU purchase, and Staples was the awarding supplier. We have not received any nitro gloves as any of these that we ordered, we still have a supply of small and large and extra large, and we have medium-sized vinyl gloves in stock. And we're still waiting for 580 boxes of vinyl gloves. We've still waiting to receive of the bottle fill water fountains, which are expected to be received in the early October. And then 12,000 batteries, actually we received half, half the delivery of the batteries right now. So we have ample batteries on hand for all the hand sanitizer dispensers that are hands-free dispensers. One item that was requested was the facilities to do a research on air purifiers, and basically I performed some research and read numerous articles, and the recommendation is to opt for a high-efficiency particle air filter, HEPA filter. One that has replaceable filters that are available. And many of the articles that I read and some of the research, they recommend avoiding some of the add-ons like ionic purifiers, ionizers, activated carbon filters and UV light systems. And there's a reason for that, for example, one article was saying that if you don't replace the activated carbon filter and it gets saturated, it could actually push more particulate out through into the room. And the ionic purifiers, they don't recommend them because it could actually create the particles to be negative or positive, and then be attracted to certain items in the room. So the recommendation is to go with a straight HEPA filter if you're looking at an air purifier. And then also properly sizing the air purifier is very important, sizing for the room. And during my research and reading, I found an amazing calculator that was developed by the Harvard University and the University of Colorado. They developed an Excel calculator that can be used based on the clean air delivery rate, which is a item which is just about every air purifier provides in their data. And could you show that calculator and go into the second tab, please, the school tools? So essentially, you just put in your, the size of the room, the how tall the ceiling is, your CADR number. And then what type of ventilation is existing, and it does a calculation for you that gives you an idea of how many air changes in the room that unit that you're looking at provides. And on the third tab, they even give some examples of the square footage, the ceiling heights, and the types of equipment, some of the things that they researched themselves. So I found this to be a very helpful tool if anyone is interested. Interestingly, they're doing the research, I found as many articles and research saying that they're not that effective versus they are effective, so it really depends upon who you read and what type of information you receive. But I thought this calculator developed by Harvard University and the University of Colorado would be a very helpful tool for anyone interested in looking at air purifiers for a room. This could be utilized for residential, it could be utilized for a classroom, an office, or anything, so it's a, it's a very good calculator. So I just, right, this information will be available for anyone in this district to utilize. And I'd certainly be able to provide them with any information that they may not be able to obtain easily, like the size of the room, heights of ceilings, what type of ventilations in this space. Currently, you know, how many changes in a classroom and a room, so I thought it would be very helpful to, helpful tool for people.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Yes, is it something, we'll be posting that link on our facilities page, would that be helpful?
Yes, and I also, I just have an EPA guide for a claimers in their home. It's difficult to find anything as far as a commercial application EPA guide or CDC guide, because effectively, they're mostly used for residential use, but I'm sure that they may be expanded in the future. I also read some information about the CDC is backing off some of the their earlier claims, and apparently they're going to be revising some of their CDC guidance for how these, the COVID-19s transmitted, so we'll have to wait and see if that draft comes out at any time soon.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. I, I believe this request also emanated from educators and staff, so I'm sure you've already thought of a way to share with them this information once we, once we're able to post it.
Thank you so much for sharing this, and thank you for acknowledging too that guidance is still adapting and changing with information that we receive, I think that's you know, I think a lesson that we're learning all throughout COVID. I'm wondering if, I know that there was been a request for the possibility of air filters. Are you, have, using this, this calculator and some of these tools, are you, have you been able to assess risk in certain buildings or different parts of buildings or certain classroom areas? Are you, are we identifying areas that may be more at risk or more in need of better filtration than other spaces?
That's very difficult to answer as far as assessing risk in specific areas, as mentioned before at other meetings. Each one of our occupied spaces in all the buildings provide ventilation and fresh air, which is the best way to dilute and to provide air exchanges in the spaces. And depending upon the year that the building was built, they're built under different codes and different requirements. So it's kind of difficult to determine of all the spaces in the entire district, which ones are high risk. I do, I can say that all the classrooms have ventilation, they have fresh air. The newer buildings do have a higher grade filtration than the older buildings do. And so, you know, that's a benefit, but it'd be very difficult to ascertain high-risk areas. Because really, the high risk comes also from if there is a susceptible case in the, in the room. You know, you don't know if there is a problem in an individual classroom or office, so.
Mr. Schneider, early on, there was discussion about some of the air filters potentially causing, releasing ozone thereby exacerbating asthma in children. Then we talked about that a few months ago. Were any, any of the information that you read, did that address ozone at all? And how it correlates to asthma?
Well, they, the air purifiers that emit ozone were utilized, it gives a fresh air smell to the space, but that, that is an asthma trigger according to the American Heart Association and American Lung Association, so it's recommended that they are not utilized. And the information I read is to try to alleviate and stay away from all the add-ons on the air purifiers and just stick with a HEPA filter, something that can be replaced, because if you have an electric something that can be replaced because if you have an electrostatic plate purifier, that plate has to be cleaned continuously. If you have carbon filters, they can be saturated very easily with odors. So the recommendation that I saw, the comment thread was stick with a HEPA filter and make sure that they're available for replacement and for maintenance. Because that's one of the problems is even if you go on to these websites, they'll say how many replacement filters they have available because they're, they're also being sold out. So a HEPA filter is not worth it if it's, if it's completely clogged.
Thank you for that response. Back to Mr. Rom, I'm sorry, back to Mrs. Romic's question. And I understand what you're saying, it's difficult to assess a, a high risk area for ventilation. And we talked before about some of the areas having, you know, moist air such as the locker room, showers, things like that. And there was a sense that those areas might not have good ventilation. So with that said, not trying to put Band-Aids on things, is it, does it make sense to look at the areas that folks have been less, that they seem to be less comfortable in and, and including an air filter in those areas based upon environmental feeling thoughts or their comfort, I should say?
Well, a HEPA filter or any air purifier will not do anything with humidity. And actually, the humidity and like in a locker room, a shower room will damage the filter more so than you're going to filter it because of the amount of moisture. The, in those areas of locker rooms and shower rooms and toilet rooms, the best thing is to ensure that the exhaust is operating properly. We have gone through every exhaust fan in the high school. We went through, we're really looking at all the exhaust fans in every roof of every building just to make sure that all the exhaust fans are operational. That's the best way because no matter what you have inside the building, if you're not exchanging air in the building, it's, it's not a good situation. You have to pull the air out to bring the air in.
Right.
Bring air in, for example, just opening windows if you are not able to exhaust the air isn't really going to help you because the air can't penetrate the room unless there's a way to get the old air out. So there is as important as ventilation is, they have to work together.
You know, and again, I tend to want to be more quantitative, but you know, and we, we have heard folks be concerned about the, the ambient conditions in these moisture, high humidity areas. Is there, is there something that we, that your, your team could provide to the staff that occupies these areas to let them understand exactly what you just said? So maybe they'll be more comfortable with it going forward. I mean, you've presented so much great data tonight and to Mr. Costa's point, you know, and I know you'll come up with a way to communicate to the teachers and staff that have requested these air filters, how they could, how they can go about determining which one with your help. But this information again has come up again, you know, oh, when we go back to school, oh, the ventilation is poor in these areas. If we could get, if you could find a way to get that out now, particularly to the folks that occupy them in advance of us going back into the classrooms and back into the schools, it might be helpful. Just a thought.
And in my role that I had with North Penn School District previously from 2011 to 2014, as the energy manager, I met with groups and groups and groups of people to try and explain the basics of why this is, why a 70 degree day when it's raining outside 90% humidity, why this building is humid and that building is not. And it's because of the types of systems and it, it gets very sometimes too technical, but I try to keep it as, yes, we understand, we'll try to make it, but there are limitations. And people, you know, rely on their home systems as, as a metric. Their home systems are not bringing outside air in like we have to. So on those days when it's 90% humidity outside, we're bringing that 90% humid air in. And if it's not hot enough, we can't dehumidify it in some of our buildings. So the newer buildings are much better to control, much easier to control. But yeah, we can put something together and get the word out and I'd be happy to meet with it in groups and things like that also.
Thank you. I appreciate that commitment to communication. It sounds like one more step we could take on this path to reopening to instill more confidence. Thank you for all this work and information, Mr. Schneider. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll be moving to public comment at this time. Should anyone have a question, please raise your hand.
At this time, I do not see anyone, Mr. Costa. No blue hands.
Thank you very much. Appreciate those who did attend tonight or who are watching this as a recording. So, Mr. Schneider, let's go to a summary of items recommended for work session or action meeting.
Yes, Mr. Costa, we recommended moving forward. Change order EC1. Change order PC1, change order PC2, PC, change order GCO1 for the Crawford project moving forward to an action meeting. For, and we also approve moving forward GCO1 for the NAP project. And also moving the bulk so bid to the action meeting on receipt of those contracts from Morton Salt.
Thank you for that summary, all checks out. Do we have any other business committee members? I have one question, Mr. Schneider, this is a quick one. Is there expiration on all, we have this stockpile of hand sanitizers, right? Is there an expiration on that or is that, are we good for the next couple of years?
We're good for a couple of years. The problem with hand sanitizer, if it's an alcohol base, the alcohol seems to evaporate and you leave gel behind. But it's at least five years, so we should be okay.
Yes, I certainly hope so. Well, thank you very much. I'll bring up, you know, I'll, I'll end where we began this meeting with safe schools cutting into our facilities and operations time. I would like to, you know, recommend or ask that we start at 7:00 PM for the facilities and operations committee for the next meeting, Monday, October 26th. Said Safe Schools has enough time to, to cover their issues because we're planning on, you know, a return to school hopefully in November at the latest. Would that be okay with the committee if we start at 7 o'clock for facilities and operations?
That's fine.
And to Mr. Slaughter, to the administration and others, understand that you put in very long days, early mornings and we will respect the fact to not have too late of a night. But understanding with, with school coming back, you know, I think that's an agenda that we'll probably be adding a few more items as the weeks go forward that we want to review as we button things up for a hopeful November return. Understanding also that there are some other meetings. We have a school board session tomorrow. That, you know, we may need to just be flexible as a committee, just like we discussed in safe schools, that if for, that if the board decides to reopen in any way before November, then we may need to reconvene this, this committee to cover some of these important issues for return. Okay, I've already mentioned, I'll follow the rules of the agenda here. Next meeting is scheduled for October 26th at 7:00 PM and it is virtual as of now until further notice. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm moved.
Thank you, this meeting is adjourned. Take care, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.